Red dot.
We're on?
Yeah, we're going.
Before we open the meeting tonight, I just want to put a little public service announcement out and that the planning board is looking for two members at this point. One, an associate member, which we have had one applicant so far, and a full-time member to replace me. So, anybody interested, come into the town hall and come see Rebecca Oldham, our planner. If she's not available, knock on Denise Demkowsky's door. Okay, so we want to open the meeting at seven thirty P M. Okay, I need a motion and a second.
I need a motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Want to approve the minutes of two five, two thousand nineteen, I need a motion and a second.
So, motion.
Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bills, invoices, what we got?
We have none.
None?
None.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, first up, we got one eighty Center Street.
Yes, so would you like to make a motion to open the continued public hearing?
Okay, we're gonna...
I'll make a motion to open the, continue the public hearing for one eighty, seven, Center Street.
Second.
The writers being slower. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, what we got?
So, this applicant had continued from the last meeting.
Yeah.
They are currently before conservation and they're looking to provide an update to the planning board and will most likely continue until the next meeting. Back.
Guys, if you want to come in.
Tom?
Yep, you're up.
Oh, hi. Hi, guys.
Right, three five nineteen, right, all right.
That will be the next meeting, yes.
All right, we need a motion on that or we just...
We can wait for the update until then, make a motion to continue. So, it can be recorded.
Okay, okay, all right.
Unless you would like to continue.
Oh, is somebody here for tonight?
Yep.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, let's hear it.
Hello, everybody.
All right.
My name's Stadbury from MS Peter's Night, applying for sit-in tonight on Kristen Zarella, the applicant. The owner is also here with us tonight. I just want to try to get you caught up to where we are. We had received comments from the Conservation Commission and we went about addressing their concerns. One of the things they asked us to look at first was could we narrow the pavement from twenty-four to twenty feet? Obviously, that would restrict the amount of filling, which we were able to do. Obviously, one of the big concerns with doing that, and I have some of it by seventeens for you, was to make sure that the fire truck could still make all the proper turns off the road in and throughout the site and the fire truck has no problem making those turns. So, we felt pretty comfortable reducing the width of the pavement from twenty-four to twenty feet. We always did have this gravel road at twenty feet. We also made sure that the hay truck can come in, deliver the hay here. The curves here and here are designed to allow the truck to back in and go out, go out forward. So, that, that worked out well. So, we didn't, we didn't have an issue with being able to reduce that, reduce that pavement width. What that allowed us to do was to eliminate some work in here for a wetland replication area and we were able to combine it into one over here, which saved clearing and work in the buffer zone. We also eliminated a large turnaround area for cars here that also reduced the amount of clearing and buffer zone work. In this area up here, we reduced the size of the paddocks to get outside that one hundred foot buffer zone as well. So, right now, we have a meeting tomorrow night with the Conservation Commission and we're hoping that we're going to get a positive approval from them. If we do, which we're hoping we do, we're going to be basically then turning around and submitting stuff to T E C and Rebecca, highlighting all of these changes and addressing some of the comments that T E C had that I have to address once I know what the final site's gonna, gonna be like. Also, to let you know that we did meet with the water department to discuss about the water line coming in and also the mechanical room and so forth, we've done that. We do have an M E P person on, onboard, we met with him at the site. We've worked out a way to get the sprinkler system, not only through the new building, but through the existing lining rink into the existing residence in stables up, up, up at this end. So, that was a breather for us, we were kind of nervous about that, but we were able to work that, work that out. So, at this point, we're poised really to go from, you know, if we get our approvals, we're poised to go right into the architectural, the M E P, to get the drawings completed so we can actually start into construction. We did have a code review on the building as well to address some of the issues that the building department had about safety access, occupancy, and other things that we have to address in the architectural drawings. That code review, I sent it to you and to, to the building inspector and he's been going through it and working with, I think Tom and I met with him concerning one issue, which was just basically the caretaker's access, their second means of access out of, out of the building. So, tonight, we're here, just we wanted to get you caught up to where we've, what we've been doing and just to let you know that we are on tomorrow night as a special conservation hearing.
Do you expect an order of conditions issued at the meeting or...
We were looking for a vote for approval and obviously then they'll issue the order of conditions. But if we can get the vote for approval, it kind of gives me a lock saying this is what they're approving and then I can address all the, you know, your concerns and so forth. And then we can get, get that, I can get that out right away. So, that's what we're, that's what our goal is and that's what we're kind of, that's what we're kind of hoping for tomorrow night. So, if it goes positive, Rebecca will be the first one to know.
Just a couple of questions for me, which is no big deal really, is the tractor trailer coming out, coming out of your place to turn onto Center Street?
Yeah.
Is he gonna have, is the width gonna be enough so he can make that swing, you know?
Yeah, we did, I can send you the auto turn movements we had on that. The ones we were mo, the turn we were most nervous about was, once we got him backed in here, that's why this, this sweeping turn is so big.
See, I, I don't mind on your site as much as coming out, coming out on Center Street area. That, that's, I mean, that's your, your deal in there, I, you know?
Yep, we can send, I can send you that, yeah.
Yeah. And then, what size water main are they asking you to run in?
Well, right now, we're, we're running an eight inch in.
Eight inch, really?
Yeah, but, but we haven't done a fire flow test, which we're gonna have to do.
Yeah.
And so, some of that's gonna come down to the M E P once they get the fire flow test and what the sprinkler system's gonna require.
Quiet, yeah.
Because remember, as, as we learned when we went at the site, you know, this is a hay loft up here.
Right, exactly.
So, there's gonna be a beefed up sprinkler system.
Yes, yep, yep.
In, in here, so we, those are questions, are good questions, but right now, we have an eight inch coming in.
No, 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 yeah, no problem, I just...
And we also, they wanted us, and what we're gonna do, once we know we get, we're in the approval process, we're going to do, with the water department, we're gonna excavate down, expose the main to make sure this is in good shape for a cap.
Right.
If there's any corrosion and stuff, we may have to replace some of the lengths, but that's one of the...
I, I know they've had a couple of leaks around that area, so that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but, I'm, I mean, it's not up to me to decide, I, I'm just curious, that's all.
Yep, yep.
The only, the only really curious one was is coming out with a tractor trailer truck onto Center Street.
Yep.
Or coming in off of Center Street.
We can, we can send you that.
Yeah, so, no, no, no problem, so.
I'll send it, I'll send Rebecca a PDF and I'll always, I'll bring copies with me to the, to the next...
That's fine.
Rebecca forwarded it over to them last time.
Yeah, I don't know, I think the tr, how often does it come? The hay truck, like...
The hay truck or the, well, the...
Couple weeks, every other week or so?
The dumpster.
No, no, the, the hay, the hay's delivered.
Well, the dumpster comes on a truck.
Probably once a quarter.
Once a quarter, oh, oh, once a month?
Yeah.
No, once a quarter.
Oh, oh, once a qu, oh, really?
Yeah.
That's what we're, yeah, that's what we're...
Fifty-three foot tractor trailers in my driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
Tricky, but they...
Yeah, no, I know, yeah, I, I'm just saying, you know, so, but, no big deal, I just, you know?
Why do you have to...
I, I kind of see you kind of got the line out along...
Because of the...
Square footage?
The square footage of the building requires, you know, the sprinkler system.
Just wondering, yeah. Yeah.
For houses, or even that, even if it's just, so it doesn't matter what's in them though?
It's, it's, the building code...
It's the total square footage of all of them, connected together.
Yeah, yeah.
And, believe it or not, the height, the height, yeah.
The height, too.
That was another factor that was in the report.
Right.
There's a total square footage, because these are all connected now.
Yes.
And then, and then the height of the new building.
And we're fire walling between the old section and the new section, too.
Gee, yeah.
Wow.
Expensive.
Yeah.
Yes.
They wouldn't go, let you go to a dry system?
It is gonna be, it is gonna be a dry, it has to be a dry.
Dry system, yeah, because...
Only because of the load.
Load, yep.
Because we have to have a load that these trusses can handle and that's, that's in there.
Right. Yep.
One of the things we're gonna be doing is gonna be running one line down here and one line down the other side
I see.
to lessen that, that load. We're not gonna have a center one going around with some offshoots.
So, I think the only other comment was that there is an independent reviewer for the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
And he filed his report today.
That's fine.
So, we'll have that for the meeting tomorrow, so expect that, you know?
And he's coming to the meeting as well, so hopefully...
Who would that be?
What was his name, Brian?
Greg.
They've used him before.
Yeah, Greg, um...
I forget the name, but they, they use, they've used him on multiple projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's familiar with everybody there.
Mm-hmm.
He, uh...
Just wondering.
Yeah, I was, uh...
That's all right.
The chairman had indicated that he would come, he, he may be able to come today, but he didn't.
Tonight, yeah.
He's at the selectmen's meeting.
Oh, he is, oh, okay, all right, that's why he was probably gonna come.
So, any additional information that you could offer so that I can help craft any of the conditions
Yeah.
that fall within their realm and whatnot, so that we can be prepared at our next meeting, would be appreciated.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then also, just to update the board, we did receive a call from National Grid in response to the butter's notice that was sent out for the meeting, I don't know if they contacted Conservation. They were concerned about the buffer, the tree line buffer over by the easement over right there.
Right here.
However, I provided the additional information in the plan and they were fine with that for now. So, if there's any changes, we'll make them aware of it, but just know that it's in my...
Oh, there we go.
Did you steal your name?
Is, that's, that's one thing, is...
The peer reviewer, what's his name, Greg?
To get, to get your power, I mean...
Yeah.
I know there's power in there now, are, are you planning on putting power...
Yes, and that was one of the, one of the questions.
Are, are you going overhead or are you burying it?
Going underground.
Underground.
We have to move a utility pole and one of the things the M E P person's gonna be working on once we know we're in good shape is a load, basically doing the electricals so we can determine a load so we can go back to the electrical department and say, okay, what, what do we need for a transformer? We don't quite know that yet.
Exactly.
But again, that's something that we know we have to do.
And where would be the, transfer, transfer be out, out on the road or inside?
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in here somewhere.
Okay.
We just don't know size or where, what we need quite yet.
Yep.
We do know we have to move a utility pole out in the street, so that, that we do know.
Yep. Okay.
So, so, so we're, you know, Mike's here and, um, um, as I was saying, that we, we're, we're gonna be having a meeting tomorrow, is if we don't snow, um, but, um... Um, hopefully to address all the remaining issues and, and hopefully get, uh, some feedback and a process, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. No.
So, do you have any questions for Mike, feel free to fire away.
Who's the review engineer, Mike?
Frank Hartman. He did, uh, he worked on, you know...
Yeah, Center Place.
Yeah.
Okay. It's good, I like it.
Do you, do you have any questions on the mic right now?
Uh, no, I, I think that the wetland scientists did a very good job of addressing most of the concerns that we brought up and also the peer reviewer. We're pretty much down to one or two things that we have to decide tomorrow night and so I expect that we'll be issuing a permit after tomorrow night.
That's good, good.
So...
Yeah, the road's good because Center Street's only twenty foot wide.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You know? You could even...
Can you just sign in?
May I ask you please?
No.
Uh, so when, when is the next?
So, next, we're, we're gonna continue until the next hearing, which would be March fifth.
That would be awesome.
Yep, I saw, I make a motion to continue the hearing until March fifth.
And I'll keep you updated.
And, um...
And I'll...
And have all the updates from them on our March fifth hearing. Ian from the Conservation, too.
Yes, I am.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, for the... For the next hearing, the three oh one Main Street, the, our peer review engineer was not able to make tonight's meeting, but he is available by phone, so he said that I could call in. Would the board like to have him be on or...
This is a bit ongoing, this is ridiculous.
Well, do you wanna look at, want us to look it over first before...
Yeah.
He, so if you wanna review the comments that are within the packet, they submitted those comments and if you want, we can then call him if you have any specific concerns. But he is available to be called, so I just... And I don't know, I'm sorry, I spoke too soon, I don't know if you wanna open the continued hearing or if you can wait a second.
You know what's going on more than we do.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, exactly, well, he's only trying to grow the grass. I've been learning that crack and I was like, he doesn't just... Yeah, he does, he does, something similar, yeah.
Don't do that.
It might be worthwhile to have them on the phone to kind of walk through the main points.
Hmm.
I, I, that would be my...
Yeah, this, I didn't know, this many pages.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll call Pete.
Yes.
Pete. Hi, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, okay? Hi. Hi, Peter, you there?
Hi, good evening, Peter Olson from Tennessee there.
They're just reading over the memo right now.
Okay, do you want me to jump right into it?
Yes, that'd be great, explain it.
All right, sounds good. And there's, there's three main sections to the report for three oh one Main Street. The first section has to do with the traffic generation that we expect from the variety store, small retail use. The second section is about site circulation and parking. And the third section has to do with the survey review, confirming the boundary and some additional requirements that we would recommend for the site plan. For the first section on the traffic generation, I don't think this section is really anything that'll be difficult for them to overcome, being happy with. We want them to confirm that the use will be a variety store, that is what they used in their traffic generation memo on the bond. If it's not going to be a variety store, because there are a number of uses allowed under the small retail zoning code, I guess, we would want them to use the highest use for, for traffic. For example, if it was gonna be a bank, it would be, you know, a lot higher traffic generation than, than a small variety store. Comment number five has to do with the previous use, which was a Getty gas station with auto repair bays. They made a comment in their memo that they think the gas station would have generated higher level of traffic than the, the new proposals. That's not something that we necessarily agree with, without seeing some kind of calculations to back it up. And the final comment from that section is asking for some additional information, the site distance measurements for the driveway for people leaving the site, updated trip generation as needed, depending on if they are going to go with a variety store to use. And then, the third is some analysis of how the site generated traffic would impact Main Street and the traffic signal, because there's, there's nothing really in their memo about that. Any questions on that first section?
I think we're good.
No.
Okay. The second section, in my opinion, is the, um, the, the biggest hurdle for this applicant. It has to do with site circulation and parking. So, what we found as we looked into the property is that we could not find any record of any cross-access easement between, um, the, between the property at three oh one Main Street and the insurance company next door. So, I think the way the board needs to review this property is that it needs to be able to function on its own, unless the applicant can provide proof that they have a right to access that other driveway, essentially. But our, our comments in this section has to do with the minimum required parking per zoning. The drive-out widths are not behind enough, they need to provide additional loading zones. And then we called for some type of vehicle circulation plans for fire trucks and also for a trash truck if that is intended to be a use on the site, if they will have, if they will have a trash truck coming to pick up from the site. And then also, we recommended that a stop sign and stop bar be installed at the driveway intersection. Does the board have any questions on that section?
Well, what are you saying, that, that the entrance and exit has to be through, between the post office and the Getty Station, is that what you're trying to tell us?
That's, yes, that's, um, I think that's how the board really needs to review this, unless the applicant can provide some proof that they have a right to access the property through the insurance company next door.
Okay, I, I agree, I agree with that.
You agree with that?
Yes.
Good. So, I, I think that's really the biggest hurdle for this applicant. That section, I think it's gonna be very difficult for them to provide the proper parking and circulation within the site without providing that access easement.
All right, Meg, Bob here from the planning board. I heard from secondhand, and this is just hearsay, which I'm not sure of, but when the bridge went in, um, he, she made an agreement with anybody that was gonna buy the property that the bank was supposed to be torn down to make access for the other property. And I know there's, there's probably no record of it or anything. I know she's got, she got some money from the state for taking some property from the bridge area. Is there any way we can find out if that's true or not?
Um, it'd be, it'd be really difficult to prove that without some kind of legal recorded document, you know, something on, on the registry or something, you know, something of that kind of nature.
Okay, I know, I understand that, I just, somebody came up to me about it, about two weeks ago and, um, said, they actually came to the town about it and, um, I, I'm sure it never got recorded or anything, so, but, so I was just inquiring about that, no problem, so...
Okay, so, moving on to the third section of my report here is, has to do with this, the survey. We were able to look at the boundary of the site and confirm that the, the way that the boundary's plotted on this, on their site plan is accurate. The post office building is located on their property, on the property owned by three oh one Main Street. And to our knowledge, we, we believe that the post office has some type of lease agreement with the owner of the property, it's a long-term lease. And it, it was something we think could be important as well from a site layout perspective, because the post office probably put some type of requirements for a minimum number of parking spaces and loading areas that they need as part of that lease agreement, which would take up a portion of the site and would not be able to be used for the building at three oh one Main Street if it were to be reoccupied. So, that, that, and then in, in the combination with that, we were not able to find the cross-access easement between this parcel and the insurance company parcel at two ninety-three Main Street. Those were the biggest findings from a survey review perspective. Um, those were the biggest findings um from a survey review perspective.
Yeah, it's, it's, this Jim, for your, uh, one of my biggest peeves is, I mean, it's so tight down there now. There's really only three delineated parking spaces, one of them's handicapped for the post office. There's also an area where trucks have to back in and either bring out mail from the trucks or load up at the end of the day and everything, and it's um usually you can't, if there's three of those spaces taken up, you just can't get in there, so you end up parking along the side of the gas station. And uh even the guy that works in the post office full-time, he's got his truck usually parked up around that area too. Um, eh, I just have always found it hard to get in and around that thing, and I mean definitely going through Norwood, which is probably been illegal for everybody for um too many years now, but that's what happened when the bridge started being built. Um, it, it's, it's put a lot of people out of the Groveland post office and into the Georgetown post office, is, is what's happened, because I've I've heard this not only from other people and everything, I used to use it all the time, quite frankly, on the way to work. But uh, the town clerk has told me that as well, that people would just continue to complain about it. I've asked for a post office box, actually, you know, mailbox, to be put somewhere here in, around the town hall. Because if, if you look around the town, I can't find any. We used to have them years ago, and uh for some reason, uh they've all disappeared. And I did ask some people down in Georgetown, do they have them, and they started pointing out different places in their, in and around their square. So, something's wrong, and you know, my, my whole thing is, I mean, if, if this thing gets worse, then my suggestion to the town would be to move the post office. Simple as that. We, they, they need to be more accessible, so. My two cents.
I heard that the post office has we signed a, a temporary agreement for a small-time lease with the owner. Um, I'm not sure, that's, I mean, like they said again, that's a, that's hearsay again, to me, so um I mean, we can get in touch with the post office. I think we have to get in touch with the post office and see what kind of re- uh, agreement they have, and how long agreement they do have for it.
Are there any other questions for Pete, or should?
Well, I mean, it, looking at that area, I mean, to me, it's, it's almost like, you know, if anything is to be put in that former Getty building whatsoever at all, it would probably be nothing more than a telephone operation, you know, with a few people in there working out of it per day and no customers. You know, it, it's it's, i- it's unfortunate that the town itself did not take the lead and purchase that property. It should have been done, because it could have been done very easily, because the monies received in rentals from the post office would have paid for it over a twenty-year period. And town of Groveland blew it again. Not happy.
Well, we sent over the comments to the applicant just this morning, so the applicant hasn't had a per, a chance to prepare a formal response, but the applicant is here this evening if the board um would like to entertain his response to what he's read thus far. I don't know if it, it'll be easy for Pete to hear, or we should just wait, or?
So, so I, I just read this report this afternoon, I mean, so from my point of view, I mean, so the T E C already approved, I mean, so the borderline between the 299 and the 293 is correct. And uh, we shared the driveway, this is what I understand, because I, I own five, five feet, and the, the insurance owns fifteen feet. The total is twenty feet. They cannot turn around the car without driving on my driveways. So we both share this driveway. When we share the driveway, we both have the access rights to go through this driveway, this is my point. Second, I'm willing to work with town to get as many low traffic, I already told, told eh, town initially, we'll try open the hydroponic store, so, so I can let Peter know, it'll be much, very, very low traffic, it's not like a mini store and all this, so it's a very, very low traffic.
So one of the big things that we need to um also make sure is that, that he's saying that there is a shared driveway, and um that, that definition of the fact that he owns five feet and the Norwood Insurance owns fifteen feet makes it a shared driveway? And what T E C has said in their memo is that that is not the definition of a shared driveway. There would need to be legal access and easement to pass and repass over that. So there has been some discrepancy between what the definition of a, a, or, or a disagreement, is a better word, uh between what a shared driveway is.
Right.
Can you get a, can you get a, uh, have you spoke to the insurance to get like an easement, that, we talked about this?
I already talked to them, I already talked to them. They seem to say no, but I don't know why, I mean, I only, I only share everything with them. I said that I can share the expense for you, and I can share the cost for that, and the post office is cleaning the snow right now, they don't clean the snow, post office is cleaning all the snow. So the post office have used this for many, many years.
I know, but legally, you need an easement.
You need an easement, and if, if I, if I own Norwood, I wouldn't give it to you. I'll tell you that right now, because.
Well, well, the, the point is, they, they know what they use my driveway every day, they only own, own fifteen feet.
Yeah.
So when they turn on fifteen feet, you cannot drive two car going and out. So you have, they have to drive on my driveway anyway.
Well, they, they're driving on his driveway and parking on his side of the parking lot to go to your post office, so I mean, this, this, this two, this two sides, there's two sides of the story, so. Don't argue with us, I mean, we're, we're trying to figure out this.
I just try to see what's best for town, how we can work it out, and when I bought this property, there are no agreement, there are no.
Knock out the post office.
There are no agreements to say that, that, the, the building has to be tear down, no, there are no such things. And I, I, I'm not gonna tear down anything. I'm gonna just keep as it right now, just use as it right now, nothing will be changed.
What'd he say?
I don't understand, so you're saying that so that you're gonna, you're gonna keep everything the same?
Yep, he doesn't want it tear down nothing.
Oh, no, no, I, I understood that, no, but I understand that, so, but the one other thing is, the, to back it up, the, between you and Norwood, that is a civil matter, if you wanna get involved with that, that is not a matter before the planning board today. Today is before the site plan review, so you need to discuss that with Norwood and your personal attorney in that regard. In regards to the usage, you just said that it's gonna be a hydroponics.
Yes.
You had multiple individuals come into the office about different uses for this potential building, are you now saying that this is going to be a hydroponics?
It will be hydroponic or something less than hydroponic traffic.
Or something.
Or online, something like, like will be, will be less traffic, but it will be go hydroponic first, if they stand lease with me. I don't know, just still were standing lease for, still waiting for, I, I waiting for your approval, then they can stand lease with them.
So you're still saying that it's a retail location?
Yes, and it will be low traffic, it will be not convenient store on the bank or any of this.
In bringing this back to full circle, in regards to the post office, will you be able to share that document with the town so that we can see, or would you be able to have that, put that in writing? Any restrictions on the site, big surprise?
I have a post office, I'm asking when to get a contractor, but I don't have the, I don't have the contract from post office. All I have here, the, when I bought property, this is the, what, what I signed paper from the post office, that's it, that's all I have. So I don't have any, any, in, in the, any contract from the post office.
What's hyphonics?
Hydroponics.
Hydro, oh.
Hydroponics, I believe, is where there's a, a plant-type store, where you buy seeds and other types of um, plant materials for, for growing.
For growing, that's all.
Uh, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I, I mean, I'd have to look more in detail, and in this regard, this is more of a, a property transfer, uh, not.
This, this, this is all I have, when, when I bought property, I can ask them and try to see if I have any contract with them, what kind of contract.
And that's what I think that T E C is trying to state, that if they, in their lease state that they need.
I will ask, I will ask, once I have it, I will share with you.
That would be great, so I think that that takes care of that, one of the big concerns is trying to figure out if there's any other requirements, then the other one, that.
It's, here, another one is in, if you, you're gonna do a hydroponic grow shop there, it's gonna be a retail store. I want, we wanna see a parking layout, we wanna see traffic flow and everything else, that's what we do.
All they have here, but I, I will have the response coming to the T E C, I mean, so.
So you, you'll work with Haze Engineering in order to get a, a, um, an auto turn movement and, and show the traffic
Yeah.
uh, in and out?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And what kind of trucks going in and out?
Right. So is there a, anything else that we can discuss this evening, it sounds like you have a lot of stuff you need to respond?
He has to answer the, respond to.
We, he has to, we answer this response.
Yes, but I, but I wanna have the, I wanna have the the outcome from the board and what the board intentional, because I don't want to continue to do this and that the finally board still try find any reason to reject it. I don't, I don't know what is the board gonna think, I mean, that it.
We, we've already told you what we're thinking about, uh, we, uh, we, we've worked, we've been working with this for six or seven months now, with you, and we, we've told you what we need
Yeah.
for your store. So just, you, you, you better spend some money and start doing it, that's all.
Respond to this.
Okay.
Yeah.
You'll have to respond to this with your engineer.
I understand that, but, but, but I don't want to, I, 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 I respond this way, then you, you, you still find some reason.
If it's favorable, yeah, but if it's favorable, we can't, we, we'll, we'd say yes.
Yes, exactly.
You know what I mean? But if he says that we can't, uh, if the response is that they, you can't, they can't answer the question, then it's a situation.
The board will not be able to deny you if you follow the regulations.
I understand it.
The board can only approve and make this improvements to the site. They cannot deny you if you are in accordance with the bylaw. If you're providing the information and you're providing the site improvements that make the site uh function, then there's no reason for the board to vote unfavorably on your application. But you still need to respond and you need to address the concerns, or else they cannot make that determination.
Thank you, thank you for the, this was.
I'm an engineer, Peter, the engineer, you, you guys all have experienced, this is existing property, this is a very small property, and it's common sense how this one should works. I mean, so, but uh, everybody have just a different view, you can find some, any other reason, I mean, so. That's what I try to go with it.
We, we cannot, with the, this site, we cannot go on using an entrance through Norwood's property. We cannot, we cannot do that. You're gonna have to prove to this board, you can enter and exit that site through your own entrance, between those two buildings. That's what you gotta do, and still have enough parking in there. Because I, I can tell you, it, it, it's bad enough looking as it is, but my feeling is, you're gonna load it up and it's gonna get worse. And at that point, you know, the, the townspeople are not gonna be happy with that situation, especially where you got a traffic light sitting there too. You should have really thought this thing out before you put your money into it, as far as I'm concerned. You should come before the town first about it, but.
Hey, uh, Rebecca, I, I don't wanna interrupt, but I do have to hold off, uh.
Okay.
But I will, uh, I'll reach out to you tomorrow morning and, and get the rundown, uh, from the rest of the hearing.
Alright, that sounds great, thank you Pete.
Alright, thank you all, have a good night.
Good night, you know, just answer the um comments.
Okay.
So, well, um, so you'll take this back to your engineers, put together a comment letter, and um if the board would like to continue this meeting for either um the March fifth or the March nineteenth meeting?
How, how long is it, do you think?
Two weeks would be sufficient, okay, that would take us to the March fifth meeting?
Okay. Motion to ex, continue the hearing till March fifth.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
And also, I mean, can I have one comment, I mean, so, and the, the lease I have was a post office, it is between a, post office and me, I mean, I think it's, it's unfair for the town to suggest post office to move, I mean, so.
The big thing is that the town does not have the legal ability to offer things to your site that uh makes the other building non-conformant. We can't say that you can have the, eh, we, i- if you wanna just give us the terms that apply to parking and anything that would, on the site improvements, that would be sufficient.
Okay.
So the, the next item was the Salem Street. Uh, William Pollock on behalf of the Who Holmes, they are not going to be able to submit this evening, but they have asked to um uh be placed on the next agenda for February fifth and will be presenting at that point in time.
Okay, so that's gonna be what?
That's the, the March fifth.
Next meeting, three, three, five?
Yep.
Alright. Did we get something in writing from them, or did they just phone call you?
Uh, they're gonna, they're just gonna show up, 'cause it's just an application submittal.
Okay, alright. Alright, what else we got, um, Sunset?
Um, just to provide everybody an update, uh, in your package, you'll find the comments that um Lisa, our, our board member, had um uh put together after reviewing the plans that were submitted at the last meeting. Um, those have been submitted to the engineer. Uh, also, uh, the um, wanted to update the board and let them know that the water and sewer superintendent has reached out to uh Steve Baker at Five Sunset, and we are working with them in terms of getting the hydrant replaced. Uh, he's hoping to actually have that done closer to the springtime in order to minimize the convenient, uh, the inconvenience to the homeowner, as well as also be uh more um agreeable construction-like weather.
Right.
Um, so that is taking place, and then lastly, in your package, you'll find an email from uh Denise Dembroski, the town finance director, confirming the roadway procedures, um, I guess, then there was some confusion at the last meeting as to where roadway acceptance comes into play, and that process typically starts with the board of selectmen or the roadway commissioner, since we no longer have a roadway commissioner, the process needs to start with the board of selectmen, once the board of selectmen receive that application, they will refer those documents over to the planning board, the planning board will then have forty-five days to make a non-binding recommendation to the board of selectmen in regard to uh their recommendation for acceptance. We start the procedure here at the planning board, they submit their ASBIL, they submit all the other documentation, the planning board has a general understanding of exactly what the project and where the project is in the process, but again, it needs to start with the board of selectmen, not the planning board. I do understand that the applicant disagrees with that process, and he is here tonight in regards to the ASBIL and roadway acceptance plan and um the procedure in place.
Okay. Yes, I, I um, I'm just familiar with, sometimes we submit to the planning board for comments, and, and the planning board refers the documents to the selectmen, so I'm I mean, I thank you for forwarding all the information to me from the review, as well as the uh helpful information from, from the co-ment page. So I'm not in any disagreement with any of that. Um, what I'll, I guess what I'd like to accomplish tonight is go through the comments I received um regarding the ASBIL plan. We were able to make those changes.
I thought we went through, last night.
This is from Lisa Chandler.
So she had taken the ASBIL that was submitted at the last one?
Oh, from Lisa, I'm sorry.
So they didn't actually get a chance to actually perform a review, and Lisa had offered her services as an engineer.
Yes, exactly, yep, exactly, I remember that, yep.
So I, I guess ideally what I'd like to accomplish is um getting positive recommendations from the planning board to the selectmen, once we go through this list of comments. So, uh this is a the sealed roadway acceptance plan. And we also have the accompanying ASBIL. We used to submitting that sound. We used to submitting that simultaneously, the thought was is that this roadway acceptance plan gets filed. Same deeds office upon acceptance. Okay, so if we, I don't know if everybody has a copy uh of Lisa Chandler's comments.
Yes, they're in the package.
Okay, so I'll start with number one, um I guess there was a little confusion um. With uh how the legend was referencing the as-built contours versus existing versus designed. So this plan here uh shows as-built contours in the plan view. Typically what we do is we compare the as-built co- contours with the designed uh grade in the profile. So that's here, that's done, if anybody wanted me to. Show you that, we could look at that, but but it's it's there. Um the benchmark should be on both plans. So we have a benchmark now added to this as-built plan. It would be uh not recommended to to put it on the the roadway acceptance plan, cause there were no elevations referenced on this type of plan, it's just need some bounds. So that's the way I have it now, if somebody want something different, we could obviously do so. Uh number two, the easement. Needed to be shown on the as-built plan, it's it's shown on the roadway acceptance plan. And it's now shown on the the as-built plan with the rip rap. It all fits in this page, we didn't need, it was recommended that we do an inset to the as-built plan, we were able to make it fit fortunately. On this plan and it is here.
You sure Wallace is something like that?
Well, it's.
I just could.
Yeah, yeah, it's preferable.
I could, I could throw that out.
Easy to read, yeah, that's okay. Alright, so now um. Roadway acceptance plan should show the drainage easement and submit a written easement deed, I guess.
I've 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 um sent it over to Lisa and when I responded that a deed and an easement were submitted at the meeting in an email. Uh that just that night, so we have received those.
Okay, great. Alright, so now we're on number four, this this was in regards to um on the definitive plan, we showed a permanent slope easement. Um we were going to be using that for the grading as part of definitive approval into Tony George's property, which is, we're not doing that. So we've eliminated that from the roadway acceptance plan and the as-built plan. Um so Lisa's comment was, I'm unsure if the slope easement with Mr. George still exists after the installation of the fence, if it does, easement needs to be shown in the plan and. And the deed drafted, if it is no longer valid, this comment is void, so the comment is void. Alright, so this brings us to number five, the deeds and article are still missing.
So I don't have an article, but the deeds, I I do have the deed and I do have the easement.
Okay, great, now, is there any chance that the, somebody within the town could write the article?
We can give you um language that we've used for uh prior like the street acceptance.
Excellent.
I can get that and send that over to you.
So I'll, I guess I'll prepare that, once I receive that. Alright, so now this brings us to the question about the the bounds and the locations, the bounds. Uh where they're supposed to be, it was all updated, um but now some places we weren't able to use the granite bounds. Uh this is because things like the electrical box is right in the corner, it's a common, common issue. So we we played carefully placed an iron rod there instead of digging up for a granite bound.
Yeah, we love that. Yeah, that's 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 that happens in every subdivision, I can guarantee you, at least. At least two per lot, between lots, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
So we we do have the three bounds at the entrance, um I can tell you from trying to get survey work completed. We need a point, we need to find it, if we can find it with a metal detector, we can find it perfectly, so railroad spike is very metallic.
Yeah.
In in addition, the railroad spikes have uh punch marks on top of it and that was because it's in the sidewalk. Uh in a couple of locations, so ev- everything's as shown. The the monuments referenced on the as-built are also the same monuments that are referenced on the roadway acceptance plan. So I believe that takes care of number six.
So but you, I'm sorry, just back, so you said that there's, so there's two iron?
There were, there were three granite bounds, there's an iron rod at the um, maybe where the electrical box conflict would be.
So you've identified the ones that are iron and which ones are granite, okay.
Yes, it's clear as.
Just just cause that's essentially her comment was to provide an explanation and reconcile, so as long as that's been pointed out on the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's pointed out, um.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, plans need to be updated with the final location of the hydrant, I I have the existing, this is an existing conditions plan, the fire hydrant's still there. We all know that, we're gonna move it, somebody's gonna move it. As what plans need to include fence location, streetlight location, baseline information, proposed contours. What we have on the as-ba plan is the existing contours, but we do in this case show what the proposed design contours were. So ev- everything's shown, the um.
Were you able to get the streetlight taken care of?
Yes, the streetlights on the plant. So that's all there. And I'd be hoping we could um move this forward.
How do we do without the hydrant?
Hydrant and um. The, what do we do about the grass?
No, that's there, that's the hulu.
Okay, alright, so so that, that's nothing to do with us, it's just a hydrant, it's, yeah, yeah, no, I know we gave that up, absolutely, no problem.
Yeah. Not gonna do with the right. No.
It's just a hydrant.
Yeah, remember we all f- want grassology anyhow, so.
Exactly, yeah, so it's just a hydrant then.
Yeah. Well. I mean, you you it's, I hate like how they keep holding this thing up because it's been held up for about three years now. Various reasons, various problems with the butters first and then. This last or a situation where no, I don't wanna, I give you an easement, just get it off my property where it for years it was okay. Um you know, at this point, the hydrant has to be relocated by water and sewer. It it should not, Wallace should not go on that property whatsoever at all and then do the job. And that what we need to do, I think, is we need to submit a guesstimate, good guesstimate by water and sewer. There's been many over the years of the cost to move that hydrant. Submit that to Bob Wallace and say we would like to take the money out of the remaining money.
The money's already been allocated or with without, we released forty thousand dollars from the remaining bond and we kept uh twenty-five thousand dollars, so.
Twenty-five.
I've already talked to water and sewer, they estimated just under ten thousand, so we have enough to to relocate, but we also.
Okay. We need to tell Bob Wallace that, okay, so he fully understands, he ain't getting twenty-five back, he's getting fifteen back and ten will be retained by the town.
Well, he he, he'd get ten back right now and keep five just in case they hit something, uh you know.
You wanna hold?
I I would hold another five, you know, you never know.
Well, I'm I'm not, I'm not gonna give him anything back at this point in time, we've given him forty, okay, we hold a whole twenty-five, we tell him of that twenty-five. Right now, it looks like a minimum ten thousand dollars should complete the job of moving the hydrant. However, if something, they run into some problem, you know, we have.
Something, yeah, I would, well, we have some extra in there, so we don't have to go back to, you know, so that's all.
Right. Right, right. Not, you know, I don't wanna even give him a not to exceed either, but you know, the whole point is that we have the money.
No.
But the thing is, so.
I just don't want them trying to do it right away, I want them to wait till we get better weather sometime, late April, maybe early May.
Yeah.
You know, because what they're gonna be doing is they're gonna be digging up his front lawn and also a good part of that sidewalk to bring it out to the planting strip.
Sidewalk driveway.
So.
So this does need to go before the board of selectmen for the roadway acceptance, uh so even then. I don't think that the planning board needs to make any recommendations at this point in time, because the board, the board of selectmen will refer this matter back to the planning board. And at that point in time, they can state it, um I think that this is extremely rushed. They, this needs to go before the board of selectmen, then it needs to, the the warrant article, so I'm just concerned about timing, um but again, I don't.
You don't think it will make it to uh.
Would you wanna approve approve or recommend an as-built that does not have the final utilities on it? So if something were to be called into question based upon this roadway in the future and they needed to go out and locate that hydrant. And they went out on site with that final as-built, are they gonna find the hydrant where they're located in that private property, or they gonna find the hydrant somewhere in the planting strip? And they're gonna look to see exactly what the layout is, is that a final as-built, is that the precedent that we set for the board that we approve plans that are not final? Final utilities, final utilities in a roadway. But that is the the discretion of the planning board, but again, it's also at the discretion of the board of selectmen, if the board of selectmen have a problem with the hydrant. Being shown in a location where it's not going to be in the future, does the planning board wanna make a recommendation? That that's where the fire hydrant should have been but wasn't, but we think it should be, it should probably go there, it might go there, we're not too sure if we encounter any problems, but we held a bunch of money back just in case.
Can you say that again?
So, I mean, it's up to the planning board to decide how they wanna proceed, but at the same time, that needs to go before the board of selectmen, once the board of selectmen receives it. It will come back to the planning board for a recommendation, so we do not need to make a decision tonight, it can wait until the board of selectmen refer it back to the planning board. But my caution is again, that the final utilities and the final layout of those utilities are not on the plan. And that's the plan that we keep, that's the plan that goes into the to the highway superintendent's drawer. So it it makes it difficult for us to call up a plan with utilities that are not final, not houses.
If John goes to water and sewer and says to them, here's the plan, where are you gonna put it?
And I can stick it up, um you know, the the these are all exact, I mean, most. Uh utility companies are used to working with with things that they can't see, they they don't have good as-built plans. In this case, when the fire hydrant does get relocated and I can, I can show existing and proposed right on the plan.
True.
Well, you could bring that up with the selectmen.
Yeah, I I I bring it up to the selectmen first, cause I I understand what Rebecca's saying, he's, she's trying to cover up, but to. You know, we we don't wanna approve a plan that, I mean, what happens if the electric is right under where the the water's gonna go? And so you gotta move it another five, six feet, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen, you know, um I'm not trying to be a hard.
No, it's just all I'm, all I'm trying to say is.
I mean, I'd like to see it go up, go forward.
Another year, I mean, this becomes a.
Dick safe's required every.
You know, we we get beat over the head by builders all the time for, you know, lengthening out situations and and. This has gotta be the worst one that's ever happened, it started in two thousand and thirteen, you know, it's six years has gone by.
I wasn't even born then.
Yeah, and it's 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 a thing that, you know, we've got to look at it from both angles here, okay? We're changing something relative to what, because we no longer have a road commissioner, that now they want done a different way.
It would have still had to go through the process.
It was always Bobby saying thumbs up.
Well, I I think that Bob can either agree or disagree with me, but it would still need to go through the proper procedure, which is through the board of selectmen.
Yeah, it's supposed to go.
It would have a joint hearing under the roadway commissioner and a joint hearing with the board of selectmen.
With the board of select.
Yeah, that's the way it was supposed to be all the time. Yes. And it was working that way? It, we did have quite a few of them that way. Okay.
Yeah.
It's not being changed, it's just now we don't have a roadway commissioner to be that process.
I mean, they made me, they, I mean, the last subdivision I did, they made me.
Kyle, does he hold some position at this point or what?
Well, well, he's the interim, yeah.
No, I'm I'm appointed. You're appointed as. Interim highway superintendent.
Highway superintendent.
Super superintendent. I have no powers as far as acceptance, road acceptance or anything like that.
And that's all done through even under the the as the roadway commissioner, when he was a roadway commissioner, the authority to accept. Uh the layout and the accept a way falls within a board of selectmen or city council. There is no other authority, even as the roadway commissioner, he helped lead the process, but the ultimate authority fell with under the board, within the board of selectmen.
Right, I could bring it forward.
Okay.
To the board of select and have the joint meeting, but now.
Okay.
The applicant has to.
So even if the board wanted to vote favorably in terms of moving forward with a a warrant article for street acceptance. It still needs to be filed first with the board of selectmen and then would come back and the board can then decide. If the, even with the hydrant not located where it is, if the board of selectmen give the okay to that and the planning board again agrees that. It's been staked out and it will be done in the spring, then then maybe they'll make a favorable recommendation.
That's what they do.
I I make a motion to submit it to the board of selectmen as the way it is. And tell them that what the hydrant is gonna be moved. And they can throw it back to us and we make the recommendation from there.
Yeah, um when's the cutoff for that town meeting?
March seventh, I believe, for the warrant articles, but to get on the planning, uh the um, it's in her email, to get on the board of selectmen. Would need to petition the board a second prior to their March fourth meeting in order to make it on the warrant.
I'm gonna go jump out on a limb and I'll second the motion, okay, so we can move on this thing, you know, I mean. Uh someone's gonna have to go to that meeting, I guess, you know, and say.
I?
Okay.
I'm more than well on the go.
Alright, cause.
Yeah.
Um. Too bad I couldn't do the move it before that.
Hmm.
Yeah. Well, I wouldn't want him to try, because I mean, in this kinda weather, we, uh I'm sure that ground's pretty hard underneath with all the ice we've been having, you know. I don't know, there's grass there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty si- it's si- it's sandy too.
What what bothers me, what bothers me is is would there be a problem with the the homeowner at that point?
Probably would be right now.
Yeah, so I'm 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 trying to avert that, uh you know, it it it's one thing, I don't want Wallace to do it, I want water and sewer to do it. And, you know, they, we've certainly got enough money in back of the town and everything to. Uh take care of Mr. Baker's uh fear of, you know, nobody's bonded or anything like that, but. The number one thing is I wanna do it right, so we, it's not, it doesn't have to be done again and everything, it might be done later, that's all. But we'll get done, we have the money to get it paid for, that's all.
We gotta. But we gotta, we gotta approach the water department too and ask them if.
Yep, that, I've already approached them, they're they're all set, they've talked to Mr. Baker, um they've they've had their gentleman that goes out there and does this work, they they um Mike.
They said, they said they would do it. Yep. Michael Leslie.
We're all set with everything else though on the list.
Yes, everything else has been accommodated, we have all the copies, I will give you the warrant article examples that we have in the past, you can submit them and I'll give you Denise Dembowski's information, you can get on their agenda. To submit it formally to them and then we can get this moving and then based upon what they say, then the board can rest their hat on however they wanna make a favorable or unfavorable, but otherwise you have. Complied with all of the other outstanding items, so there there's nothing else that I think that the board can hold.
Okay, okay, okay.
Alright, so.
Alright.
Should I do anything with these plans now or hold on to them until I bring bring it in with the warrant?
I would, I would hold on to them so that you don't have to make any additional copies for yourself.
Okay. And I'll s- I'll distribute some electronic copies if that helps.
Yes, that would be great and and again, I'll get you that sample language tomorrow so that you'll have that and then I'll I'll provide all the documents that I have. Um so that you can compile them and again, give you Denise's information so that you can get on their next meeting.
Okay, so yeah, if that all falls into place, I should be able to get it done by the end of the week and that should be good.
Okay.
And there, but I I'm sorry, there was no other comments in regards to the plans and Lisa's comments?
Are we doing anything about the, trying to show the existing versus proposed in this as-ba plan or?
I would re- I I mean, my recommendation would be the board of selectmen would would, I mean, they're gonna either. I would re- I I mean, my recommendation would be the board of selectmen would would, I mean, they're gonna either, I don't I don't know how they're gonna wanna see it.
Okay, so have that meeting, when is their next meeting that I can get scheduled for?
They met tonight, so they meet every
They might meet next week, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's not next week, but the week after.
Following, you you, yeah, you'll probably get it on the following week.
Good.
So that would be their fo- yes, that makes sense, cause that would be the fourth, so you need to get it to her before that was her, her email, I forwarded it to you, the March
Yeah, that was great.
Prior to their March fourth meeting, so you would need to get it to her shortly.
Alright, so the end of the town is in sight.
Yeah, sounds like it, hopefully.
Yep.
Puts out where proposed future hydrant location.
It might be worthwhile, but I just don't wanna say for certain if the board of selectmen wanna, how they wanna have it listed.
Right.
We'll find out at that meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it'll be an easy fix.
Okay. Okay, so I guess the other critical thing is, I mean, Rob Wallace should be kept in the loop about what took place tonight?
I will um send him an email tomorrow with an update and let him know that we've ar- I mean, he should already have received the wire transfer for his forty thousand dollars that we released at the last meeting. Uh I will update him and let him know that the procedure for moving forward, I see, seen him on that email that I sent you today that Denise had sent with the Copeland page memo, so he has that, but I will definitely follow up with another email uh tomorrow with that language that we discussed and also uh the happenings of this evening's meeting.
Yeah, we're reminding him that, you know, they the board voted to hold ten thousand to relocate the
Oh, yes, yes, I I thought that was already uh
Yeah.
Mentioned in the in the email, but I will definitely do that again.
We should, we should memorialize that one more time.
Yep.
Yeah, well, we can't do that until after this plan uh selectmen.
Oh, that that is, I just meant that it, that we've released forty thousand dollars and we've retained twenty-five thousand dollars, thousand dollars.
Oh, okay. Right.
I'll I'll reiterate the the what has been released, what is retained, what is being retained for and the intention to release it once the work has been
Yeah, cause he might, he might wanna chime in on that.
That's fine, yeah.
So, giving that opportunity, I appreciate it, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, y'all. Alright. So if this uh interested anybody uh tonight that would like to apply for uh both the associate's membership and or a full-time membership, please get in touch with Rebecca Oldham, our planner in town. Okay, if she's not available, please see Denise Dumkowski as well, thank you.
So we have the, well, we have the Nelson Street plans and then I just have one item I wanna update the board.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we do have
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So we just have to sign, so we
Jumped the gun, huh?
We voted and approved the Nelson Street storage um facility and they have asked for their plans to be signed, they will be held until the twenty day appeal period is over, so I just need uh we'll have to sign that, we can do that in a second. And then the last item from my my planner's report was just to inform the board that uh Bill Daley uh was originally proposing a friendly forty B at the Swole Street location. Uh he had decided not to pursue a friendly forty B and has filed directly with Mass Housing uh for quarry apartments on Swole Street. Uh the application was received by Mass Housing last Wednesday, so the town has thirty days to submit comments back to the state. Um so I am going to be putting this item on our next agenda on March fifth for a public meeting, which was just for the board to make their comments. Um so I will forward the plans that we have received thus far at the next meeting, uh if you'd like to either submit them in writing.
What's he proposing then, at this point?
It's a, it's a forty B, it's just not a friendly forty B, so originally we were going to have uh workshops and uh discuss
With the town and everything, yeah.
The impact of the development on the town, he's decided that he does not wanna pursue that option and he would like to go directly and file his forty B without having any back and forth with the town prior.
So is this, are these still, still all rentals or are these gonna be?
From what I understand thus far, yes, it is all just rentals.
Okay, so they would still all count?
It'd be a hundred and ninety-two and then the application contains the breakdown, which I can forward you all so that you'll have an opportunity to comment on those in public.
Okay, so if the one fifty you were talking about at one point, he could only do, now bumps up to one ninety-two no matter what?
He's proposing to do a hundred and ninety-two, I was only uh inquiring at one point in time as to what he would be allowed to do based upon our population size and the US Census um housing information uh which again will change because of the twenty twenty census, so it might not be at that particular figure.
Okay. Alright.
So the board of appeals still hears though, or hears?
Yes, the zoning board of appeals is the um uh special permit granting, the the permit granting authority in that particular case. We are only providing comments as board members, it is not a public me- uh public hearing, so there'll be no public comment. It is just for the planning board to uh publicly voice their comments to be included in the comment letter.
Okay.
I have to work, I have to work on it.
I make a motion to close the meeting at eight forty-five.
Second. I'm still, I'm tired.
Forty-five.